Ladies and gentlemen, it is now seven oh two PM. So the budget hearing and annual meeting of the school district in New Berlin is hereby called to order. In recognition of the serious and important nature of our efforts here, we will join in the Pledge of Allegiance. For all those, I'm sorry, we will start with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, for those who wish to prepare for the meeting, we will have a moment of silence. Prior to this meeting, notice was given to the public by hosting, by posting the agenda at each district school, the district office, and the city library. The agenda was also posted on the district website. Additionally, as per state statute, notices were published in the Waukesha Freeman on September sixteenth and twenty-third. Copies of the agenda were forwarded to the Waukesha Freeman, the Waukesha County Now, and the Journal Sentinel, all of which have filed requests for all public notices. We're going to start with introductions. Today, we have all of our board members with us. We have Mitch Helmer, our Vice President, Jeffrey Kerth, Clerk, Ron Seidel, Treasurer, Amy Crosby, Kate Unger, Crystal Nochacek, and myself, Janet Schultz, President. We also have Legal Counsel, Chrissy Hamel, from Braun Bresen, Von Bresen, and Rover, and staff members, Superintendent Joe Garza, Chief Academic Officer Kelly Sanders, and Chief Financial Operations Officer Patrick Miller. I now turn the meeting over to Superintendent Garza and Patrick Miller, who will present the 2021-2022 proposed budget.
Thank you, Janet. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us, and my portion will be quite brief. I really just wanted to kind of kick off the budget hearing with just a few highlights from last school year. The first piece that I did want to mention to you is if you haven't already received a copy of our annual report, annual meaning that you get one every year this time of year, and so you should have received that, which was very well done by our Communications Department, Dave Cody in the back. They are actually an award-winning communications department. They actually receive awards for that annual report every year, not just for the content, but the layout and everything else. So we're extremely proud of not only that annual report itself, but everything in it. These are some of the highlights. You know, obviously, with everything related to COVID, you know, we could easily be distracted with, with all of the blips and ups and downs of what that could bring. But certainly, we are extremely proud to have been able to open up our schools to in-person learning and staying open all school year last year. We also are extremely proud that we were able to offer a comprehensive virtual option for students and families that wanted that option, of which we had approximately a quarter of our students district-wide that chose that option. So extremely proud to have, you know, we certainly learned from things along the way in both cases, whether students were needing to miss because they were quarantined or so on, or staff that were out because they were quarantined and so on. So, but again, we're extremely proud of that accomplishment, as not many school districts in Wisconsin can say that they were able to achieve that. We had approximately four hundred and four students that graduated last year. Actually, West's graduating class was larger than Eisenhower's last year. Both events were held in person and were very well attended. We did have the Eisenhower graduation ceremony over at the Westfield House. Quite honestly, I never heard one concerned complaint about it, and I had a graduating senior. They asked why we were doing it, and we said, because it was a bigger space. It's actually a bit more convenient to have more people in the facility and at the meeting. So again, it was incredible to have those ceremonies in person, and also extremely proud that they raised approximately $4.3 million in scholarships. So that's a testament to, you know, it's how easy we can, you know, we think of a graduating senior and how those high school teachers got them ready for that, but it really starts out in kindergarten and even before that, with their parents giving them that educational foundation and, and so on, and all the way through elementary school, middle school, and high school. So great achievement for our staff as well. I'm really proud to say that our board has worked diligently to pull together an aggressive multi-year funding plan for long-range facilities, which has been something that we've been working on, and it's been, it's been a gap that we've experienced. But our board has worked hard to make that happen. In the annual report, actually, there are also about five or six other key highlights that the board worked on last school year. That was just one of them, so not only identifying what capital projects we have, but also getting the funding for it. And that is something that will continue in a conversation, actually, in November and December. Probably not, you won't hear a lot of that tonight, because we're really focused on, on setting the levy for tonight and some of the broader things. But again, extremely proud of the board's work and our work in making that happen. Certainly, our teachers and our students continue to achieve individual awards. We actually had five teachers earning Herb Cole Education Foundation Award and one student, which is, again, those are just some of the many great things that are happening in our school district. Again, I'd encourage you to defer to that annual report when you get the chance, which is also found online on our website. As far as what we're here for, specifically at this portion of the meeting, this is considered officially the budget hearing. So Patrick will come up and he'll present, have several slides that he'll go through. He'll provide a high-level summary of things. And then this year, we are required to provide an update on ESER funds. This is considered kind of our ESER funds hearing, and we'll share with you some of the plans, and again, those will be very high-level. Projected financial future, and then we'll allow for public comment. I do want to clarify the public comment piece, that the public comment piece should really be focused on the budget itself. Know that we have three parts to tonight's meeting. The first part is this part, which is the budget hearing. Once Patrick is done presenting and we address questions, comments, or concerns about the budget, once that has been completed, then that portion is done, and we move on to the second part of tonight, and that's the annual meeting. And then, thirdly, we have an actual school board meeting. So if you have any comments, questions, or concerns that are not related to the budget, there is privilege of the floor that you can, you can wait until, which is not until that regular board meeting, which is the third part of tonight's meeting. So, or meeting agenda type. So with that, I'll hand it over to Patrick. I'll stand by till the end to help us answer any questions related to the budget, and then we'll go from there. Patrick?
Thanks, Joe. Good evening, everybody. My name's Patrick Miller. I'm proud to be the Chief Financial Operations Officer for the School District of New Berlin. It truly is a pleasure for me to come to work every day and be able to work with the Board of Education, great staff, great administrators for the children and the taxpayers in New Berlin. What I'm going to present to you tonight is a high-level view of the budget. When you came in tonight, you should have had, and I apologize, I don't have a paper copy, I just have it on electronic, you should have a document that looks something like this. This is a more detailed, in-depth look at the actual budget itself. To begin with our high-level summary, just want to start with some notable things that are included in the budget. First of all, there's some pandemic things, there are enhancements that are included in this budget. Primarily, ESER II and ESER III funds. We'll talk a little bit more about those in a later slide. These funds will be used for additional expenditures to fill academic and operational needs throughout the next two school years. We did have a budget surplus this year. Part of that budget surplus was due to pandemic supply chain issues. But then another part of that budget was just due to fiscal management. We put ourselves, if you remember back to the last budget hearing, we positioned ourselves so that if the pandemic started to deal us some, some bad cards, we were going to be in a position where we were going to be able to handle that. And I'm proud to say that not only did we have that fiscal foresight to put those things in place, but we also made it through the last school year without having to have large expenditures to manage pandemic issues. Capital project funding. Tonight, in the levy, we are going to be recommending the establishment, re-establishment of Fund 41 with a $1.85 million levy into that fund. What this fund does is it allows us to move through capital improvements, and the dollars that are put into this fund stay in that fund and can only be used for capital improvements. So essentially, using this fund is a commitment to the district that the dollars that we put towards these capital improvements are indeed going to be used for those capital improvements. We're going to talk a little bit about fund balance. We did have some fund balance this last year, and the board has committed to using some of that fund balance over the next five to nine years to help us maintain facilities management through the use of Fund 41. Part of our budget surplus this year was due to pandemic supply chain issues. One that is probably easy to understand is technology. Everybody, you know, everything that has, has a semiconductor in it, there were supply chain issues, and we did order our replacement technology well in advance, at least we thought at that time. We ordered in February, where we would normally order in the spring, early or later in the spring. And we still were not able to receive the, the computer replacement until after the new fiscal year had started. By DPI rules, you have to place the order, receive the order, and be invoiced in order to count that expenditure in a fiscal year. So the dollars that we had planned to spend on technology that rolls into fund balance, and now we're spending it this year when the technology is delivered. The unusual one that I was a little surprised with is the same thing happened with a large textbook order. And, you know, that, I don't know that textbooks have semiconductors in them, but there was a problem with us getting a pretty substantial textbook order, and so it falls under the same thing. Now that we're receiving those, we're going to be spending that as fund balance. We do have some exemptions. These are exemptions that allow us to levy additional dollars for the purpose of helping us, for the first one, declining enrollment. As our enrollment declines, we receive a hold harmless exemption, where for the first year of that decline, we get sort of a financial forgiveness so that we can manage the finances as that enrollment declines. When enrollment starts to pick up, that exemption goes away, because then we will start to actually receive more dollars because of our enrollment increase. Years ago, the district also engaged in some energy efficiency projects, and as part of that, the, the legal paperwork that we do with the Department of Public Instruction, we are allowed to levy, just for the, the energy efficiency projects, we're allowed to levy the debt service for those projects minus the calculated energy savings. And so every year, Performance Service does an evaluation of our calculated energy savings for those energy projects. We subtract that from, actually, DPI does the math for us. They subtract our debt service for that. They subtract the, the savings from the debt service, and then they calculate that we are allowed to exceed our revenue limit by $1.6 million. Some of the revenue assumptions, and I'm going to go through this relatively quickly. This is all included in your, in your booklet. State budget for the next two fiscal years did not, does not allow for any increase in per pupil categorical aid or revenue limit authority. So the dollars we get directly from the state is flat. We have a reduction of an estimated forty-two full-time equivalent students in our three-year rolling average. We are in a slight enrollment decline. Part of that is due to, we believe, to the pandemic. We do, I will say, we had large senior classes this last year, but we also have some large kindergarten classes coming in this year. We have one, a decrease of one FTE for summer school that we did really well this year. If you remember, last year, they opened up summer school to include online learning for the elementary schools. They closed that this year, but we were still able to maintain all but one of our full-time equivalents for that. So that's, that's a great testament to our summer school program. Thirty-nine new open enrollment ends. We, again, are receiving an estimated 15% increase in state aid. Again, a lot of that goes to our, our financial management. When you, when you have fund balance, that allows for an increase in state aid. It's just the way the formula works. We're anticipating a 0.54% decrease in property taxes and an increase in federal aid through ESER II and ESER III, but overall, a 1% general revenue decrease. You can see the lion's share of our revenue comes from local sources, and the most, the majority of that is property taxes, but it also includes any other, like student fees, any facilities rentals, things like that, that fall into a local source. State, federal, and then other sources where we may receive money, for example, from open enrollment from other districts. Expenditure assumptions. We did have an increase in certified staff wages, and that was approved by the Board of Education. Two percent increase in health-related expenses per our, the recommendation of our consultants. Purchase service reflects budget reductions in property services. We moved some of those expenses into Fund 41. We've also reduced some of our software expenses in the business office, and open enrollment seniors out last year was also a reduction. We did put in some utility increases and a transportation increase of 13%. We also put in a, included in that 13% is a fuel, fuel surcharge. So we're trying to account, account for some of those, some of those things, we're monetary things we're all struggling with right now. We have some technology infrastructure improvements that we're going to be doing. One-to-one devices. We're moving away from leases into purchasing. Just to make this clear, I've had, I've heard a couple of questions in the community. Why are we leasing, or why aren't we leasing instead of purchasing? You know, now, you know, who's going to do all the maintenance on this? Leasing computers is not like leasing a car. Okay, so when you lease computers, the computer company doesn't come in and fix them every year. Leasing, leasing computers is essentially like purchasing a computer over time. So instead of doing leases, we're purchasing them upfront. Leases are great when you have some budgetary shortfalls, because it allows you to spread things out. Now, we're able to move back into purchasing. We could move back and forth over the next 20 years from purchasing to leasing and back and forth. We're just managing the, the funds that we have. Reduction in special education aid transfer. So the dollars that come from Fund 10 to support special education, we're anticipating those to redo, be reduced, due largely to the fact that the state aid for special education is increasing. And then, fund balance spend down, that was approved by the board in March, I believe, for capital maintenance. This is a graphic representation of where our expenses go. You can see, obviously, salaries. We're a people business, so we have a lot of salaries and a lot of benefits. Purchase services is also pretty high. Purchase services are when we pay anybody to come into the district to perform services instead of self-performing them ourselves. So, for example, a large expense for purchase services are transportation. It's probably the largest. But it also includes things like substitute teachers, which is also a pretty high line item in our budget. Transfers, that would include things like the open enrollment transfer, would also include transfers for special education, which is about a little over $2 million. Non-capital objects, those would be things like computers, anything essentially over, under a $5,000 capitalization threshold. Capital objects, anything over that $5,000. Insurance and judgments, those would be, you know, our, our property casualty insurance, and then any, when you think of judgments, it's just anything that we have to pay. I should say, not, not necessarily as we, we had like a lawsuit against us, like a judgment, but this would be just ancillary expenses. Okay, and then others, other expenses. We have a lot of, you know, DPI is great about having this very insane coding structure, but then they, in every one of those different codes, they have things that they just don't know how to code, and so they put that as another. But that's a very small portion of our expense budget. ESER funds. Elementary and secondary emergency relief. You've heard a lot about these since the pandemic started. This was signed into law in the American Rescue Plan in March 21. Essentially, what ESER funds are for is to provide state educational agencies like the Department of Public Instruction and the school, school districts in the state with funding to help safely reopen and sustain safe operation of schools, and also address any impact that the pandemic may have had on social, emotional, and educational programs for, for the students. The district will, or can use those funds to reimburse any pandemic response expenses going all the way back to March of 2020. So we're going to use those funds to, again, to address student learning, social, emotional, mental, physical health, and we will be doing some operational upgrades as well. The first, excuse me, the first of those was the ESER I or the CARES Act that was given to us and spent during, in the beginning of the 21-22 school year. We did most of that, or all of that was for PPE. ESER II will reimburse the district for expenses going back to 20, March of 2020. Right, and, and essentially, ESER III will do that as well. We don't really, we know how much we're guaranteed from those two funds. It's about $1.2 million. But that could go up to approximately $4 million, because there, there are other, there are calculations that the Department of Public Instruction is doing right now that's going to determine what additional or subsidiary funding we will receive. We just won't know exactly what it is until the department has done those calculations. They anticipate that's going to be done sometime in November. One of the things with ESER III funding is 20% of that funding, the anticipated funding, can be used for reopening, essentially, operational expenses. Eighty percent of that has to address things related to social, emotional, learning loss, those types of things. I'll be working very closely with Dr. Sanders and her staff to make sure that all of the things we're claiming for those ESER III funds are being claimed correctly. That is, that's kind of what, so that's what we're doing with the ESER funds. If you have any comments or feedback with how we're, we're planning on spending our ESER funds, or if you have any, I guess, just comments for the district in, regarding ESER in, in general, please use this web link to submit those comments for feedback. We will be looking at all of those. And again, as, as the funding is determined, we will also then be determining how much we're going to spend and where we're going to spend that. Onto the tax levy. It's probably the reason everybody comes to this, right? I am very happy to report to those of you who are here, those of you who are watching this meeting. The, the School District of New Berlin is in very, is in a very strong financial position at this point in time. The 2021 tax levy, $45.7 million. The proposed tax levy for 21-22, $45. roughly $5 million, a reduction of $246,000. It's a 0.54% reduction. Primarily, this reduction is because of the increase in state aid. The tax rate for 2021 was $8.53 per thousand dollars of equalized value, and we estimate that is going to be reduced to $8.31, so $55 on a $250,000 home. Right now, and I'm going to tell you this, this assumes a 2.58% increase in equalized value. Right now, we, we don't have the actual certified equalized value yet that's due by the first of October, but I will tell you, I will be shocked if this 2.58 is not significantly higher. Correct. The, the amount of the levy will not drop, but the levy per thousand dollars of equalized value will drop again. Correct. This is a phenomenal chart for any school district in the state of Wisconsin. This is our property tax, the equalized value, the tax levy, and the tax rate going all the way back to the 2012-2013 school year. While all these numbers, I think, are important for a numbers geek like me, the last column in that change, I think, is something that's worth highlighting for the residents of New Berlin. The change in equalized value is lower than the Consumer Price Index rate of inflation in all but one of those years. So if you look at all the negative numbers, those are the years that our tax rate actually dropped. The projected financial future. While, if you look at this chart without any, any explanation to it, you're going to look at it and go, what in the world is happening in fiscal '22 and '23? Remember, $3 million in fund balance this year. One million of it was just in supply chain. $2 million in, was accounted for in approximately a 5% reduction in expenses and an increase in revenues. So I am very proud of the work that my staff does. I'm very pleased to say, and I'm going to, we'll see how red she turns in the back of the room over here. I've got my comptroller, Crystal Reed. the room over here, I've got my comm controller, Crystal Reed. My staff does a phenomenal job in managing the finances of the district. And if you go and talk to any of the, any businesses around, if a business can say they've controlled their expenses around 5%, that's a really phenomenal year. And so, we were able to do that. Now, next year, we had already planned on spending a million dollars in fund balance on capital improvements, and remember, we also have that million dollars in expenses that had supply chain issues. So, we're planning on spending two, at least $2 million in fund balance this next year. We may not spend that much if we have another good expense year, or if we have another exceptional revenue year, but that's what our plan is. And then the following year, we're planning on another million dollars. It's going to be related to capital improvements, but as we develop the budget for next year, again, that's going to be up to the board if they want to reach into fund balance to do more improvements because we were able to control our expenses from year to year. That concludes the presentation that I have for the budget. Again, I know this is a very high-level presentation, but you do have a booklet that goes into much greater detail. One of the differences that you'll see, or one of the things you'll see in that budget book is I show you all of the revenues and the expenses by object and source. I think it's a very customer-friendly way of explaining what is an insanely complex budgeting process at the Department of Public Instruction. So, please make sure you let me know if there are any questions. Let Joe know, work with that feedback site, and we'll do everything that we can to help continue to bring further transparency to the budgeting process. So if there are any questions, what I'll ask you to do is I'll flip this microphone around, and that way, everybody can hear that, and Joe and I will do our best to answer those questions.
Thank you for your presentation. On the slide that you had for the ESER funds, you had said that as a result of the ESER funds, which were a result of the American Rescue Plan, we netted an additional $4 million? Is that, is that an accurate way to put it, or?
The $4 million amount is what we could receive in guaranteed funds and potential supplementary funds.
Okay.
So, what they've done with those ESER funds is, from the federal government, they established guarantees based on enrollment, Title I enrollment, low-income enrollment. And then for ESER 2, they have additional funds that are available based on districts that were in-person versus virtual. And so, ESER 2, we will be eligible for additional funds. We just don't know how much at this point in time. And in ESER 3, we're eligible for supplementary funds that would bring the ESER 3 distribution up to $781 per student FTE. The only thing that we don't know at this point in time is what three-year rolling average they're going to use for that determination, so.
Do we, do you know of any estimates or any actual numbers as far as our expenditures related to COVID-related measures, mitigation measures, PPE, things like that?
So, right now, I know that as soon as ESER 2 is established, my staff will be ready to submit reimbursement requests for just a little over $1.2 million. That goes all the way back to March of 2020.
Okay.
And then going forward, like I said, we'll be working with Dr. Sanders to make sure that we are claiming any dollars that we are eligible to claim, to receive these funds.
So, it's a claims process, not a grant?
Correct. It's a claim process. We, obviously, there are, because it's a federal program, there's strict rules as to what you can and what you can't claim. And essentially, I believe the Wisconsin State Legislature is planning on these dollars being used for the next two fiscal years to help us manage our budgets, so.
Final question, the slide that you had for open enrollment. There it is. Is that a net increase of 39?
Yes.
Or is that 39 in, but not counting any that went out?
It's 39, it's a net increase of coming in from last year.
So, it does not account for any students that open enroll out of the district? Is that what you're saying?
No.
Do we, do we know that number?
Yes.
Is there a number attached to that as far as a budgetary amount?
No. So, the number is 167. How does that compare to previous years, Dan, as far as? It's about the same. So, I guess what we would say is the 39 FTE increase would be roughly a net gain, approximately, because of what we had recommended to the board, allowing those that were previously enrolled and/or their siblings to be, to be added last year, and that's what this major difference is a result of.
And just as a point of, or point of information, the 3rd Friday count is when we establish all of those things, 3rd Friday in September. Today, in inter-office mail, I received the last report from one of the district schools. So, tomorrow and Thursday and Friday, I will be in my office with the shades pulled and the lights down while I'm going through and counting all those students, and so that will give us a clearer idea of exactly what that impact is.
All right. Thank you for all of your efforts.
On the ESER funds, it showed, if I go back to that slide. It shows the 80% to address the learning loss. Now, I'm assuming that's from the mandatory shutdowns, and we didn't shut down last year. So, sorry. I'm assuming we probably wouldn't use that whole $4 million, even if we had that? I mean, do you have an estimate on what that would be? I know we had some mitigation. I know we had to catch back up on some of that for.
Yeah, I think, I think some of the issues with what needs to be clarified from the state legislature is what exactly does that mean, first of all? And then, secondly, some of it isn't anything more than what we were already doing. So, for example, if we had interventions, or like our teams were providing interventions to students anyway, and, you know, you can accredit to anything. I mean, it's learning loss, right? Or learning not gained. I mean, I don't like the terminology, but it's what we have to work with. It, it, it's not anything different than what we were already doing. So, it's really just like, and there's also no clear language, or actually, I think it is clear, that what I mean by that is you can actually supplant rather than supplement with some of these funds. Is that right, Patrick?
That's correct. I'll throw a really big term out to you there. The federal government and the Department of Public Instruction is, with 80% of this, it has to be evidence-based instructional strategies, EBI-S. And so, we're, we're going to be allowed to submit a reimbursement for anything that we have spent since 2020 through September of 2023, regardless of whether it was a direct response to the pandemic, or, you know, it's, as Joe said, supplanting. That's just the rule that they've established with this. So, we, at this point in time, don't see that we're going to have a problem spending the dollars that we've been allocated. But it is, like I said, we're going to be doing a lot of work with Dr. Sanders to make sure we hit that EBI-S.
And I think what we would also do here is, just like with any, either one-time federal dollars, one-time state dollars, exemptions, and so on, it's just a matter of managing it to maximize our ability within the budget. So, you know, for example, you know, if we had to do certain things facilities-wise as it related to COVID, yeah, sure, maybe we can, you know, submit this expense, or the learning loss piece, submit the expense, which would just free up dollars for us to kind of garner that elsewhere. And so, hence why you're already seeing a surplus, and why you're going to probably see another surplus in the future, depending on how it all, again, gets legislated and the specifics come out. But, again, that's really more of an accounting piece, more than it is in managing the accounting as it is, like, this huge pot of money. It's just, I mean, it is, but it's also just, based on what we're working with, provide the expenditures of the federal government, and then maximize those dollars within our own budget. Any other comments, questions, or concerns?
Hi, Patrick. Thank you so much for the very articulate and understandable presentation this year. Really appreciate it. Just one question. I'm looking at a line that says, "It's fun to 30," and I was flipping through the packet to try to figure out what that was. Refinancing expenditures, it shows $12.9 million for this year and zero planned for next year. And I know the board is talking about refinancing some more, and that between administration and board found a lot of savings on the debt by doing some refinancing this year, is that right? But then, why would it show zero for next year? Nothing planned yet, or?
Right. At this point in time, we don't have anything planned. We do have some debt that's going to be callable in March, but the thing about callable debt is you have a period where you can call that debt. And so, even though we have callable debt in March, we can still budget to do some refinancing if it's beneficial to the district in the next fiscal year. That window will still remain open.
Janet, I guess we're good at this point. You know, as always, if the community members have any comments, questions, or concerns, please feel free to let us know, and we'll get back to you.
The annual meeting of the School District of New Berlin is hereby called to order. All district residents wishing to vote during tonight's meeting must have registered in the commons lobby and received a voting card along with an annual meeting packet. Suggested nominations are included in the packet. When making a nomination, please state your name and address. When voting, please raise your voting card high and keep it raised until the vote has been determined. The first item on the agenda is the election of a chairperson. I will now accept nominations for a chairperson to conduct this annual meeting of the electors of the School District of New Berlin. Do I have a nomination?
I, Mitch Elmer, 6229 South Thompson Howell Court, move to nominate Janet Schultz to serve as chairperson.
Don't need a second for this one. Do I have any other nominations for chairperson? Do I have any other nominations? Do I have any other nominations for chairperson? Do I have any other nominations for chairperson? With there being no other nominations from the floor, I, Janet Schultz, was elected permanent chairperson. The next meeting, the next item on the agenda is approval of the rules of order and agenda. The printed agenda is recommended by the New Berlin School Board and complies with duties and responsibilities of the annual meeting for which action is deemed necessary. Do I have a motion?
Jeffrey Kurth of 4085 South Adell Avenue in New Berlin, move to approve the rules of order and agenda as printed.
Who's second? I'm sorry. Joe? Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Kurth and a second by Mr. Garza to approve the rules of order and agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your voting card and leave it raised. By a show of hands, the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the appointment of parliamentarian by chairperson. I appoint Chrissy Hamel, the district's legal counsel, as parliamentarian.
Second.
No need to second. You only need to second motions, not nominations. But thank you, anyway. The next item on the agenda is the treasurer's report. Since the electors have printed copy of this report, do I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the treasurer's report? I recommend its approval as presented.
I, Ron Seidel of 17631 West Westward Drive, move to dispense with the reading of the treasurer's report and recommend its approval as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Seidel and a second by Mr. Kurth to dispense with the reading of the treasurer's report as presented. All in favor of the motion, please raise your voting card and leave it raised. By a show of hands, the motion carries. The next item is a resolution to adopt tax levy for the 2021-2022 school year. Do I have a motion?
I, Ron Seidel of 17631 West Westward Drive, move to levy a tax in the amount of $45,496,432, including $1,850,000 for capital expansion projects on all real and personal within the bounds of the School District of New Berlin, City of New Berlin, Wisconsin, for purchase, for purpose of operating the public schools, including the maintenance of buildings and sites, and discharge of debt.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Seidel and a second by Mr. Elmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your voting card and leave it raised. By a show of hands, the motion carries. The next item is setting a date for the 2022 annual meeting. Do I have a motion?
I, Chris Lynn Holiday-Wanderechek of 13725 West Foxwood Drive, move to authorize the school board of the School District of New Berlin to establish the date, the 2022 annual meeting, between the dates of May 15 and October 31, 2022.
I have a motion by Ms. Wondrich and a second by Mr. Seidel. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your voting card and leave it raised. By a show of hands, the motion carries. The next item is setting school board members' annual salaries. Do I have a motion?
I, Kate Unger, 4214 South Regal Manor Court, move to set the annual salaries of the school board members at $3,500, school board president at $5,000, and school board vice president at $4,500.
I have a motion by Ms. Unger and a second by Mr. Elmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your voting card and leave it raised. By a show of hands, the motion carries. And next is adjournment. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
I, Amy Crosby, of 3959 South Victoria Court, move to adjourn.
Was that Mr. Helmer? Oh, okay. A motion by Ms. Crosby, and a second by Mr. Helmer to adjourn. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your voting card and leave it raised. By a show of hands, the motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. We'll take a short break before we start our, uh, regular meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, it is now 8:01 PM, and a quorum of members is present. So the meeting of the Board of Education, the School District of New Berlin, is called to order. Please call the roll. Ms. Crosby.
Here.
Mr. Helmer.
Here.
Mr. Kurth.
Here.
Ms. Scholes.
Here.
Mr. Seidel.
Here.
Ms. Unger.
Here.
Ms. Wanderechek.
Here.
In recognition of the serious and important nature of our efforts here, we will join in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. For all those who are able, please rise. And now, for those who wish to prepare for the meeting, we will have a moment of silence. This is a public meeting of the Board of Education. Prior to this meeting, notice was given to the public last Friday by providing the agenda to the city library. The agenda was also posted on the district website. A copy of the agenda was forwarded to the Journal Sentinel, the Waukesha Freeman, and the Waukesha Now, all of which have filed requests for all public notices. Up is privilege of the floor. Meetings of the board are conducted for the purpose of carrying on the business of the schools, and therefore are not public meetings, but meetings held in public. This portion of the meeting is an opportunity for you to come and voice your concerns to the board, so please do not be offended when we quietly listen. We may even take notes. We do not immediately respond to your questions and comments. This is a time for you to talk and us to listen. Thank you for coming to voice your comments and concerns. When I call your name, please step up to the microphone, address the chair, and state your name and whether or not you are a resident in the school district. Each presentation is to be restricted to a maximum of three minutes. Privilege of the floor will be limited to one half hour. Presentations are not to be designed for purposes of engaging others in a debate in this forum. Discussion of certified, classified, or professional personnel, or of individual Board of Education members shall not be considered an appropriate topic for this forum, and the speaker will be ruled out of order. Charlotte Krupa?
Hello, my name is Charlotte Krupa, and I do reside in the city of New Berlin. Very quick, very simple, I just want to say thank you to Patrick for providing detailed information about how our New Berlin taxpayers' taxes are actually spent in the district. It was very, very informative, and I appreciate the thoroughness of the presentation provided today. Thank you.
Thank you. Leah Demille?
Hello. Leah Demille, I am a New Berlin resident and parent. So I wanted to thank you again, can't do it enough, for supporting parental freedom on many issues, and most recently on the COVID mitigation, including masking and social distancing. As we get into fall and winter, cases will continue to rise for COVID, as well as other viruses. But I'm confident we can support individual freedom, as we always have during a typical flu season prior to COVID. We will never be able to eradicate flus and viruses, and we can only manage the virus as we also weigh the harm mitigation strategies may inflict on our children. There is much talk and advocating for mental health and suicide prevention for students and staff. I am a firm believer that the best way to do this is through reduction in COVID mitigation strategies. I am so happy to see community and school events back, as they were in the past, such as the Creek Crawl, homecoming, and in-person clubs and sports. These will alleviate mental health issues through reduced stress, socialization, community involvement, opportunities, joy, and purpose in our children's lives. There is also superior in-person classroom interaction without masks. Children can concentrate as they can breathe better, hear teachers better, hug their friends, and see facial expressions which convey nonverbal communication. These things are so important to learning and social emotional growth. There will always be national and regional pushback on COVID mitigation, as the fearmongers do not properly weigh risks and benefits. The aggressive mainstream media news segments and articles continue to advocate for usurping personal and parental choice on vaccinations and masks in the name of public safety. For instance, a New York Times article came out today, and it was entitled, "COVID Gets Rudder: COVID's Partisan Pattern Is Growing More Extreme." The article goes on to discuss vaccination and mask compliance according to Democratic and Republican geographic areas. It states, "What distinguishes the US is a conservative party that has grown hostile to science and empirical evidence in recent decades. Echoes and amplifies this hostility. Trump took conspiratorial thinking to a new level, but he did not create it. Under the Promising Ideas section, it implores readers to consider imposing more consequences on unvaccinated conservative populations in regards to missed opportunities, withholding education from unvaccinated children, and using fear. This is the hyper-political propaganda that mostly leftist mainstream media is peddling to force compliance. No wonder there is so much division in our communities. Turn off the news, people, that is the answer. Anyway, I echo another community member's request. I formally request adding unvaccinated and vaccinated students and staff to the current anti-discrimination policy. I think it is very necessary at this point. Thank you for your time and attention."
Thank you. Ann Schalfinski?
I don't have anything new to bring tonight. Ann Schalfinski, school district parent. I just too want to thank you, I just, it's, it's hard to imagine too many harder times to be a board member or an administrator in a school district. I'm sure none of you signed up for this, and it's been a, a rough road, and really hard decisions to make right along. So I thank you for what you do, and I still urge you to keep the kids safe. And that includes contact tracing and, and continuing to carefully report and track COVID cases, and those absence, absent from school due to COVID-related causes such as quarantine. But thank you for your work, and we're glad you're here.
Thank you. Jeanette Nowak?
Jeanette Nowak, and I'm a New Berlin resident. Just when the caterpillar thought the world was over, it became a butterfly. The moment you're ready to quit is usually the moment right before a miracle happens. Don't give up. And sometimes, when you see a person cry, it's better not to ask why. Sometimes it only takes three words to make them happy again. Those three words are, "I am here." I just want to say thank you so much for listening to the community and adding the suicide prevention policy to, um, the district, and being there, saying, "I am here for you," is a great platform for the, um, administrators to use to be able to create policies and procedures, and to make sure that appropriate instruction is being used, and the supports needed for students and staff in the community. So thank you so much for caring a lot, and, um, being there for students in the community, and for their mental health and for their needs. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Don't really have much for President's message this evening, just another thank you to the administration for their presentation of the budget this evening, and, um, very glad to see those, um, the taxes are, are being reduced, and, um, we're in a good financial situation. Then we have the administrative team report.
I just wanted to provide a brief update, uh, as per usual, related to COVID. I do not have much to, uh, report, other than, um, we continue to move forward with, with the school year. We continue to monitor and track COVID cases of both students by school, as well as our staff. The numbers did, uh, slightly creep up, but, uh, this week so far, they are down, so, um, I think we're going to see kind of a lot of that, um, and, uh, just like we did experience last year. Certainly, should anything of significance, uh, come up, we continue to work with the County Health Department on a weekly basis, i.e., I'm on a call with them, as well as with the Waukesha County, uh, Area Superintendents as well. I know one of the questions that has been brought up as of late is, you know, what specific threshold would the school district, does the district refer to as it relates to, uh, certain mitigation strategies and/or closing a school? And I guess what I would say is, uh, we don't have a specific, uh, a specific threshold. Uh, we want to make sure that we are being flexible and fluid, as, as that's what is occurring. Certainly, the Waukesha County Health Department would notify us if they had a significant concern, just like they do with influenza outbreaks, uh, with, uh, whooping cough, with, uh, whooping cough, pertussis, and other issues. Um, and so, uh, again, we'll continue to work with them, and we'll inform the board as needed. Yes, we are able to, uh, e- experience certain things. I, my daughter, uh, who is a senior, did have, uh, uh, the joy of, of experiencing homecoming this year in a more traditional fashion, uh, along with a lot of students throughout the school district. I do know that our co-curriculars, both academic and athletics and otherwise, are moving forward, and, and we're doing great things. Uh, so, again, a lot of great things happening. So again, a lot of great things happening in our school district despite a lot of the things that are occurring related to COVID, but our staff continue to do great things. So that is my update.
Thank you. Now we have district reports. There is nothing for the incident report for August, and then for the donation report. Mr. Seidel, would you read that for us?
There's three donations total, it looks like. The first one was, the check date was 8/19/2021 for New Berlin West. New Berlin West Girls Soccer Booster Club to support huddle service for 2122 school year in the amount of $660. The approval date was 9/14/2021. Second one was 8/19/2021 from, for New Berlin West again, and that was the Soccer Booster Association, and that was also in the amount of 661 for the support of the huddle service for the 2122 school year. The third one was on 8/23/2021 for the Wisconsin Waterfowl Association to support the trap club in the amount of $1,200. And it was, the approval date was also 9/14/2021. And finally, there's no check date, but it looks like it's maybe an in-kind donation. And it's Door Shack Family Tree Service to provide ash tree treatments in the amount of $2,130. And that was approved on 9/2/2021. Total donation amount is $4,650, and thank you to everyone who donated to the school district of New Berlin. That ends my report.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which includes notice and approval minutes of September 13th. Are there any items that should be pulled out for separate consideration? Hearing none, do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Kurth, I'm sorry. A second by Mr. Helmer to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion passes. Onto our regular agenda. First item on the regular agenda is to discuss approved policies 3217 and 5772 weapons for staff and students. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? So I have a motion by Mr. Helmer and a second by Mr. Kurth to approve those policies as presented. Any discussion?
Madam Chairperson, can we pull them out separately and vote on them separately, please, as a point of order? Because the vote may be different, because there are two separate policies.
I did not, sorry, I probably should have asked if you wanted to pull them out separately, but they were put on the agenda together, so that's why I called for a motion for them together. So you're saying you want a motion then to pull these out separately?
Yes.
We would recommend that as well.
Okay. Do we need a second for, does this seem to be a motion? Since we already made the motion to approve as presented for both of them together?
Amend one, and then you have to add another, right?
So we need to amend?
So amend this to be just 3217, and then someone has to create a new motion for 5772.
Okay, so amend this then to approve policy 3217 as presented?
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend by Mr. Helmer and a second by Mr. Kurth as well. Any discussion?
Yeah, just, and again, as a point of clarification, at the last meeting, we were asked to break these out, so we did. You're not going to see much of a difference in the weapons staff policy that we're talking about here, and I'll wait to comment on the next one when we get to that one. And we did not receive any feedback since the last meeting related to 3217.
Is there any other questions, discussion on these?
This is, this is talking about the staff weapons policy right now, correct?
Yes, because this is 3217, that's the motion. I was a little confused, if there's nobody else that has a question, I just, I had a question. So I was a bit confused what the second paragraph was saying. On the one hand, it says, "Nothing in this policy prohibits an employee with a properly issued permit to carry concealed weapons," but it basically goes on to say, "But still, you can't conceal carry on school grounds." Okay, so there's, and that's pretty much, that's following state law.
I'm guessing that's to protect federal police and...
Yeah, and you know, you have the state and federal gun-free school zones laws in place, but this just clarifies exactly what the expectations are in that second paragraph.
And it wasn't clear in here, can staff?
I mean, I guess it'd be the third full paragraph. Sorry.
I wasn't, I wasn't sure if a staff member can have a weapon in their firearm in their vehicle that's unloaded and locked?
No.
Not at all, okay. You seem knowledgeable on this. Okay, so by state law, I was reading the state law, it almost looked like you could... No? Okay.
Jeff, can you turn on your microphone? Jeff, Jeff, can you turn on your...
Sorry, sorry about that. Yeah, so 100% it can't actually go into the school grounds. So whether it's a parking lot, or even if people are coming through picking up kids, if somebody was to stop them and pull them over for it, it's against state law to do it. So this just clarifies for anybody who does have a concealed carry. I have a concealed carry, so I know for a fact that these are something that we have discussed over the last, especially five or six years, when concealed carry became a thing, so.
Well, you know, it's not considered concealed carry though when it's unloaded and it's locked in your car, so I didn't know if that fell outside the concealed carry. Okay.
No.
All right. Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was following along with state law.
Sure.
Is there, is there any other questions? Okay, so if we're ready to vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion passes. So then we're going to move on to policy 5772. Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
So I have a motion by Mr. Helmer, a second by Mr. Kurth. Any discussion?
Yeah, this is where I guess I'd defer to Chris Lynn, who recommended a change to the language. If you go to, after A and B, the next paragraph after that, "Any student who has reason to believe that a person has or will violate this policy shall report to the school principal or the supervisor of the activity immediately." I think the word "shall" is what she was concerned about. Again, just want to clarify that Neola has their legal staff on, as part of their staff, and this is what they are recommending, so I guess it's up to the Board to determine if they'd want to do something different.
And what I was asking about at the time, Joe, as far as that language is concerned, is of course I want a kid to report if they know a kid in school has a weapon. But my concern is for the reporting kid, that they may be subject to retribution by a kid who has a weapon in school. So I'm a little bit worried about the prescriptive quality of that language, which prescribes that they must do that. And then I guess the question is, I have several questions. One of them is, how is that communicated to students? How do students know they have that obligation? What happens to students who don't comply with that obligation, or later found who have had this information but have been scared for their own safety about reporting it? So how do we deal with all of that, I guess, are my questions? Because I agree with the spirit of the language, but my concern is, how is it going to be executed so that we keep all of our students safe in a way that doesn't, you know, work against our efforts? You see what I'm saying?
I do. The only thing that I can share is that every case, every situation is handled by a case-by-case basis. And so certainly, if we were working with the authorities and so on, there are going to be situations where they may be called as a witness that are beyond our control, so I can't guarantee that they may need to be, remained anonymous, you know, I really can't guarantee that. You know, so you're, you know, based off of what you were mentioning, I took it that you suggested that a kid may get into trouble if they said something, which is what we actually encourage our students to do. We actually have had see something, say something campaign, campaigned the last few years. We've got new mechanisms in place for reporting, more than we've ever had before. Certainly, I can send to the Board exactly what we do and how we do it and when we do it, but I do know that we do it. I, there are signs throughout the building, there are constant reminders to our students and our parents. So, you know, again, the Board can do what it would like, so if you have specific language that you'd prefer, I guess that's, that's up to the Board to determine. But again, we felt strongly that, you know, it was vetted by the legal staff at Neola, and, you know, there's, I can say what if this or what if that, but until it happens, I don't know. I mean, so, I mean, because there's, it could be a million what-ifs, but this is what, you know, as you mentioned, this is what we want students to do.
Sure, of course, of course. I totally agree with that. I just, I'm just worried about the kids who are scared for their own safety and are afraid about telling anybody if they know something is going to happen, because if, you know, a lot of times, if kids find out that somebody in their grade or class or school is doing something, and the kid who's doing the bad thing knows about it, they can say, "You tell anybody, I'm taking you out," right? And so I'd be really scared for that kid who saw the bad thing happen to feel that they have to tell or they're going to get in trouble. Do you know what I mean? Like, I guess, I want, like I said, 100% agree with the spirit of the policy, 100%. No question about that, and I, and I will vote for it, even if it comes in this line, in this form. The only suggestion I would say is that any student who has reason to believe that a person has or will violate this policy is strongly encouraged to tell staff about it. That's what I would prefer to see, only because I don't know that we even have mechanisms in place to punish a kid who doesn't do it. Doesn't sound like we do. And I also don't have a clear answer on how this is communicated to the kids as to what their obligations are. And not just, if you see something, say something, as a, that's not a policy, that's like, you know, that's sound advice, right? It's not like if a kid who sees something and doesn't say something, then there's some kind of consequence. This policy ensures that there's a consequence, because it's a "shall," it's prescriptive. So that's my concern with the language. And I appreciate the fact that Neola has attorneys on staff. I'm just saying, as an attorney reading the language, I don't love it as far as our ability to make good on it. But again, I agree with the spirit of the language.
So I disagree. I know I rarely disagree with Chris Lynn, but I do disagree in this front. So I feel like the difference is in the staff one. The very next sentence specifically says, "If you don't do it, you could, you're going to have consequences, including possible termination." There are no consequences listed here for the students. So I read that "shall" more as like a "should," which isn't necessarily "must," because we do want kids to do that, but there isn't going to be a repercussion if they don't do it. So if, if, you know, you're fearing for your own safety and you don't report it, you didn't report it. There isn't, you know, there's not an explicitly laid out consequence in this policy, so I feel like the word "shall" in this one is fine, because the staff one does kind of have that extra sentence.
Yeah, and I think that there are two, one thing you gotta, you have to understand about, when you're writing statutes, the word "shall" has a different legal meaning than not using "shall," like "should" or "may" or whatever. Like, there's a whole statutory history of using that word. It has legal meaning. And these are legal documents. These are legal policies that we're enacting. We're government, that's what we're doing. We're enacting legal policies as part of our district. So it does have a legal meaning. There should, that's why I was asking, what are the consequences? And I don't have an answer on that, because Joe's saying it's a case-by-case basis. So we don't really know what the consequences would be if a kid violates this policy. I also, again, still don't know, like, if you're going to put this duty on a kid, then I have to know, how is it communicated? And I don't know that either. So that's, that's what I have, that's what my issues with this policy. Again, I agree with the spirit of it. I'm, you know, probably going to vote for it, but I'm just saying that I think that it's, it's a bit confusing and ambiguous in terms of, if you're looking at it as legal doctrine, which is what it is.
I'd also like to chime in just for a second. I can, as much as I appreciate your, the acumen of the word "shall," I have a feeling that if there is a kid who saw something, I think he's going to be more worried about the person with the weapon than a policy that has the word "shall" in it. I'm not sure if they're going to weigh the difference of, "A school might get me in trouble," or "This kid that I have to worry about." I think we have to worry about anything else. This doesn't have a consequence. This is just a legal document that I can probably guarantee that 99.9% of the students probably will never, ever look at. I don't think they're concerned with the word "shall." And even though we have to have, we, we want a policy, we have a policy, there's no consequence to parrot... Kate, Kate, sorry. So I, I don't have a problem with the word, and I understand that as a legal document, we have to write it in a certain way, but it's a policy that we want to have in place that they know that this is something that they should do, so.
Again, I can't imagine that Neola's legal staff would suggest something to this Board and all other Boards throughout the U.S. Language that would get us into trouble, first of all. Second of all, if we were to do something different, Neola, which does have some, their legal counsel would help us represent it, should this policy be brought up in some sort of legal case, they would, their staff would help us through that. If we were to change it, they would not.
I was just going to say that my concern is when you deviate from it, we lose that ability, they've already written that in, and... So Madam President, I'd like to call for a vote on this?
All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion passes. Next policy is discuss approved policy 3362, employee anti-harassment. Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by, oh, I'm so sorry, this came from the committee. I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that we don't need a second, because it was already brought forth by a committee. So any discussion? No discussion? All right then, so all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion passes. Discuss approved policy, I hope I have this right, 5352, student suicide? I thought that was wrong. Yes.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Kurth and a second by Mr. Helmer. Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, so all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion passes. Discuss approved policy 8330, student records. Do I have a motion to approve as, now, there's two, actually, I'm sorry, there are two options in here. So I'm going to go with the first original one as presented, and then if anybody wants to amend, we can do the amendment.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Helmer and a second by Mr. Kurth. Any discussion? Any discussion? All right then, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion passes. Discuss approved policy 8462, student abuse and neglect. Do I have a motion as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Helmer and a second by Mr. Kurth. Any discussion? Any discussion? All right then, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion passes. And we have future meetings and dates. Board meetings are generally held the second and fourth Mondays, beginning at 7:00 PM in the Eisenhower Commons unless noted otherwise. Next meeting is October 12th, that is a Tuesday. And then the one after that is October 25th. Now we're going to move into closed session. I would entertain a motion to recess to closed session.
So moved.
I need a special motion, though.
Oh, that's right.
Or you can read what I have.
I would move to adjourn into closed session pursuant to SISKIN 19.851 CE and F of the Wisconsin Department of Public Safety.
five one CEENF of the Wisconsin statute to consider the approval of closed session minutes of September thirteenth, employment performance compensation matters pertaining to staff.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Kirth and a second by Mr. Helmer. Please call the roll. Oops, sorry. Mr. Kirth?
Yes.
Mr. Helmer?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Ms. Scholz?
Yes.
Mr. Seidel?
Yes.
Ms. Hunger?
Yes.
Ms. Wondercheck?
Yes.
We are moving into closed session and will return to open session in about thirty minutes, or less.